The Leominster City Council meeting is brought to you by the generous support of the Service Oil Company, 345 R Lancaster Street, Leominster, 978-466-1922.
It's the public hearing before the Leominster City Council. This is petition fourteen dash eighteen. John P. Bulger and Dorothy Rulo and ten registered voters rezone the following parcels on Pleasant Street and Low Street from Residence B to Residence A. Pleasant Street West Side, map four eighty-one, lots nineteen and twenty. Map five twenty-one, lot one and thirty-nine. Map four eighty-eight, lots one, five, six, seven, eight. Map four ninety-four, lots eighteen, three A, three one A, three two A, three two B, and three two C. Pleasant Street East Side, map five sixty-one, lots thirty-five A, thirty-six A, thirty-seven A. Map three forty, lots one and two. Map four ten, lots one, two, three, four, five, twenty-two, and twenty-three. Map four ninety-six, lots one, two, and three. And Low Street, map four eighty-eight, lot five. This hearing was continued from March twelfth, two thousand and eighteen. I'm not sure we did, we did get a letter from the planning board. I'm not sure if that was read into the record, so I'm just gonna read it into the record now. It's fairly short. It's dated March sixth, two thousand and eighteen, addressed to Lynn Bouchard, City Clerk. Dear Ms. Bouchard, at a regularly scheduled planning board meeting on March fifth, two thousand and eighteen, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend keeping the existing zoning of the above referenced parcels as Residence B and to not rezone them to Residence A. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact my office. Sincerely, Kristen Kelly, Director of Planning and Development. If the council recalls the main reason that we continued this hearing from the last time, we heard a lot of input from members of the public and several councilors had weighed in on their positions. The main reason we continued it was to get an opinion from Copelman and Page, setting forth the pros and the cons of this type of zoning change so that the people who are affected, many of whom are actually sitting in the audience, but that the people who are affected could see in black and white what change or impact this would have on their properties. You know, we felt it wasn't fair to put some of the councilors who have some zoning knowledge in that position, you know, that it really should be an official opinion from Copelman and Page. We received correspondence from Attorney Riley this afternoon. He indicated that he hadn't been able to get that opinion done and that he would have it done for the next meeting. I, I, I know, well, having, having said that, why don't I just go to members of Legal Affairs and ask what their feeling is on that? Counsel Afri.
What are you suggesting?
Well, I mean, I'm gonna open it up to the public, but I personally think it's, it's an important document. I think, I think people should really know how, how this affects their properties. There's, there's a strong sentiment by many people that they want this zoning change and then other people have come forward with questions. And I, I just, I just really think people need to understand exactly how this is gonna affect them. And I think an objective letter from the city solicitor that sets forth the pros and cons is, is, is a good thing for everybody. I, I, I know it's been a long, I know it's been a long time. It's been on the agenda many times. I apologize for that. We did request the letter from Copelman and Page thirty days ago, something like that. March twentieth? March twentieth? Okay, twenty days ago. But I, I think it's an important letter. So my feeling would be, you know, let people who wanna speak, speak, but my feeling would be further, you know, to continue the public hearing one more time.
If that's your feeling, I mean, I, I would've liked to have seen this move and given the answer to, to the public, but you're not comfortable with it, I'll go along with supporting you for the time.
All right. Counsel Badanza?
I sort of made my feelings about this known at the last meeting. I'm, I'm in favor of the petition. I, I do, did express some bit of reservation about the fact that there are a number of lots that are included in the rezone that I'm not sure is absolutely necessary to the goal, which is to protect the neighborhood. But I do understand the difficult circumstances that the neighborhood has already suffered from because a prior or historic rezoning of the, of the neighborhood never got accomplished. So I, I made my position, like I said, clear. We did speak that night about what the impact of a prior non-conforming use, I mean, what this is all about is there are going to be a number of prior non-conforming uses created or so-called grandfathered lots as a result of this if it's passed. And there were a couple of citizens that appeared and had some questions about what that meant in terms of specific questions. I remember one was about if they wanted to sell the property, would they somehow be prohibited from the use that's existing? And there were questions like that that I, I tried to answer as best I could. And I, you know, I am the former city solicitor of Leominster and that doesn't give me the, I don't have the title anymore and it's not my position to be giving advice to people, but I, I'd like to see the thing moved tonight. It's been, as you indicate, Mr. Chairman, on, on for a long time. I understand your motivation for wanting to continue it, but I, I am sensitive to the neighborhood as well.
Any other councilors wanna weigh in on anything at this point before I open it up to the public? Counsel Marshan?
May I weigh in?
Sure.
I appreciate our conversation earlier. I appreciate the fact that you wanna, you're, there's a caution flag on Legal Affairs in order to make sure that everything is clear right to the finish. I think that's important. But I'm in support of the word for counselor and that was the last meeting to move forward with it. We're in a situation right now where we're being held up only because of a situation that's taken place in the city solicitor's office. And I'm afraid that possibly this could happen again at the next meeting. And I don't know at the end of the day if it's really going to weigh into our decisions down here. It's more or less a professional warning as to the restrictions on the zoning itself. This morning, on my way to work, I stopped in West Boylston and I took a photograph of the prefab retro units going up on Route twelve. And that is one of the biggest disgraces I have ever seen. And I can't for the life of me understand how they allowed it. There are eight multi-b buildings going up. And if the zoning requires fifteen feet in between them, that's all there is. God forbid there's ever a fire on a windy night in that complex. And quite frankly, that could happen in this situation. So, you know, I would, I would ask, you know, your committee to reconsider, just move forward with it. You know, we're doing, I think, I believe in our heart of hearts we're doing the right thing. If you decide to go with the further time, I will support it. But this has been on our table now since, I think, November eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, seventeen, so.
Oh, it's been on our table a while. There's, there's a lot of reasons for that. The petition's been amended several times.
It has.
But if the petition is passed, every single property that is subject to that petition will now be considered a prior non-conforming use. And that affects people. And I think people should know how it affects them. And I understand Counsel Badanza has, has a great deal of knowledge in this regard, but it's, it's very unfair to put him in that position. And unless each one of you councilors, if you're stopped on the street, can answer the question, what are the pros and cons of this zoning petition passing, I think it's irresponsible to go forward without that letter. Strongly think that. So, any other councilors wanna weigh in before I open it up to the public? Counsel Fekley?
Just wanna say I agree with you. I think we need the information from Copelman and Page because there's so many people involved with so many different situations. We had a woman that was asking, you know, many questions about her property and whether or not she'd be able to change it or sell it or, you know, I asked Counsel Badanza at the last meeting whether or not somebody had a single family home now could turn it into a multifamily home. And he said it could happen and that's fine and I believe him, but I would like to see that in writing from Copelman and Page so that we have it, you know, it's, it's done, the questions have been answered.
And, and we've been promised the letter, you know, tomorrow. A lot, a lot of good that does us tonight, but I, I think at least, you know, between now and the next meeting, anyone who wants to get a copy of that letter, you know, can, can pick up a copy probably Wednesday. Any other councilors wanna weigh in on this? Counsel Badanza?
Just point out too, so just for the, for the record, there's only eight of us here this evening.
Oh, that's right.
If this went forward tonight, it would require six votes, six of eight as opposed to six of nine, so that is a fact, a factor.
No, that's a good point. Anybody else? Counsel Afri?
Sure, through the chair, the Legal Affairs Chairperson. So if we get the letter from Copelman and Page, could we conceivably call a special meeting just to get this resolved? I, I really feel for the neighbors who have been dragged to meeting after meeting after meeting. Could we add it to the agenda for, we have a special meeting coming up, right? Maybe we could add that to the agenda if we do get the Copelman and Page.
Yeah.
Because that, that's a way that we could responsibly get all of the information and not delay it for another two weeks. I think that would be really, that, that sounds, that seems fair to me. That would be my, my recommendation.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I think we have a special meeting.
Good idea.
Special meeting scheduled for when?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, yeah. Yeah, that's fine.
Vacation week? How many people are you gonna be able to attend? Spring break.
Well, probably a good time to open it up to the members of the public. So if any, anyone in the public who wishes to address the counsel either for or against this petition, you know, now's a good time. Does anybody?
I'm Nona Ojala, live at three twenty Pleasant Street. I'm in favor of this petition. As I said before, I won't repeat everything that I said before, but I want you to let you know that last week I get another one of these wanting to buy my property. And when I called, this time I called, usually I just, you know, throw them in the wastebasket. This time I called and I asked, what was the purpose of them buying? These people are not real estate agents, they're investors. And they invest in homes either to flip them, which I don't think my home needs to be flipped. I think it would sell very easily. But they're also looking at property that they can invest in and build and then sell. I found out that I, on my, on the amount of land that I have, I can build, I can tear my house down and build two single unit condo, not single unit, double unit condos, which means four families living in them on my property. I don't think my neighbors wanna see that. I personally don't wanna see that. That's why I am recommending that you vote in favor of this petition. And also, my neighbor is Mrs. Patrica, who's the one that had concerns. She called me, she's away for tonight, and she called me to say, please for me to express to you that after talking to Mr. Badanza, that she understands that she's grandfathered and that she does not have any opposition to this proposal anymore. I urge you to consider this. I am disappointed to hear that you wanna wait again, 'cause really, it's, it's not been since November. That's for this position, this petition. It's really been for ten to fourteen years that this has been going on. And it really is about time that we get a concrete answer one way or the other. Make a decision, move forward. And Mr. Marshan, I wanna thank you for bringing up the fact of the condos on Route twelve, they are.
Ugly.
They're ugly.
You're ugly.
And what more would you want in our neighborhood? Closer to home. So thank you.
Does anyone else wish to address the counsel, either in favor or against this petition?
I'll huddle up. John Bulger, three sixty-five Pleasant. And obviously, I'm in favor of this petition, of course. I won't sound like a tape recorder and go over everything again, but I appreciate all of the work that all of you have done. And I would urge you, you know, to vote for this. You know, the intent is not to restrict people, but to protect what's there. I think we've made that point. I've contacted most of the people that are involved. And, you know, there's a, a few that are still probably against it, but I think, you know, in view of where it will leave us in the end, I think it's a very favorable, would be a very favorable decision. And then the other thing, are we gonna be allowed to come to the special meeting?
Oh, I just want you.
Okay, okay. All right, that sounds good. Okay. Thank, I just wanna thank everybody too for your patience as well. Thanks.
Michael Lantino, Chief, forty-one Woodside Avenue. And once again, I just wanna express my feelings in favor of the petition. We talk about harm being done. Harm has already been done. It doesn't matter how harm gonna be done, it's been done. We have a nightmare up there. We have just a hideous building overlooking the whole area. And I understand your predicaments and, but you are elected officials and, and the feeling is you don't have to stand up tall, but you gotta stand up sometime. And you gotta make a decision, one way or the other. And I'll have to live with that decision. If you go against it, I understand that and there's no way in Washington anybody, but we, we fought this like, like they said, ten years ago. And somehow this snuck by everybody and the next thing we knew it was being built. And I'm just afraid if it gets put off and put off and people start going away again and you wake up one day and there's another one going up. And once it started, it's not gonna come down again, so I would just urge you to really, really take a careful look at this and, and hopefully you'll support the petition.
Anybody else wish to address the counsel?
Carolyn Sonia, one twenty-two Low Street. I'm in favor of the petition. I'd like to ask the council members, how many of you have driven up Low Street to see what we're actually talking about? Could I have a, can you raise your hand? So you know what we're dealing with. I mean, right on the Low Street, people coming on and off of Low Street on that very dangerous hill. We have four three-story family buildings on less than a half acre of land. And there's two, there's one parking spot and one garage per unit, nowhere near enough. The first person that bought that, the condo on the end has a boat, a trailer, a truck, and two cars. So you figure it. And there's a hydrant right there. They cannot, once they get in there, they cannot get out. Awful, terrible. Would you like that in your neighborhood? It's awful. Thank you very much. Please vote in favor of this petition. Do not let this fall through the cracks again. Thank you very much.
My name is Candace Frye. I live at thirty-eight Low Street. I am very close to the condos. As I stated before, I purposely bought my home in a Residence A. I moved out of a Residence B. I knew what I had in B. I knew what I wanted in A. And to echo everyone's sentiments, you know, everyone said it's, it's not gonna happen that way. The owner, previous owner of the property maintains to this day, to today, in fact, that it's not his fault that that happened because he just sold to developers. Oh, I'm sorry. I, I apologize for my sarcasm, but this is on the table again. And a lot of people have been bringing this forward time and time again. And no one in the city has finally stood up and said, we need this to be resolved. Meanwhile, there's these little situations that aren't so little anymore. And the quality of life on Low Street has deteriorated greatly. I'm fairly fortunate that I have a, a reasonable tree cover to protect my property, but as I stated previously, the developer who's from out of town, clear cut to do this and no, is, is not even around to see what has happened. So I really urge you to listen to the people who are committed to this city because we've grown up here, we raise our children here, we send our children to school here. Keep the home feeling of Leominster and save us from people who are just coming in from out of town throwing up properties that don't fit the neighborhoods and add a lot of problems to the city. Leominster is known for its community and family feeling, and we are losing that because we are not being protected. Those of us who own homes are not being protected and we're asking for that protection. I'm asking for that because my children live within feet of that development. The street is nothing like what I, when I bought and why I bought it. And I have to live with that and I, I would like to prevent that from other families happening again. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the counsel? Second time, anyone else? Sir? Go ahead.
Good evening, folks. My name's Ron Dupuy, twenty Silvanath. The last meeting, a great deal of time was spent with the subcommittee discussing very specific legal considerations. Those are important and we know that. What you heard from us really wasn't a lot of discussion about legal considerations. It was about community, where we live, how we live, what we want going forward. Those, in my opinion, are more important because I think, if I understood you correctly, Counselor, that there will be a process if we move to A for someone if they want to adapt, change, renovate, and so forth. It might be more stringent than what's in place today, but it's there. They're protected, we're protected. We're all in a place where we really want you to deal with this tonight. I don't know how much more comfort you're gonna get out of a letter from the city solicitor when all of your fine minds are addressing this right now. So I would appreciate it if you would consider voting on this tonight. Obviously, I'm in favor of this resolution. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wish to address the counsel?
Dorothy Rulo, fifty-four Low Street. I think that, as I said to you before, the buck stops here. You're pretty able and I, I have confidence in you to care for the community and care for Leominster and to be proud of people that also care and want to keep their neighborhood and their, in a single-family neighborhood part of it, are proud to have Leominster be their city and proud to have you protecting us. And, Mr. Marshan, you asked at one of the meetings, was there historic homes in this area? And yes, we know Nona's, it's very historic with the coal manufacturing, but there's also another one. It's three fifty-three Pleasant Street. The person that has caused all of this corruption on the corner of Low Street and damaged us on the corner of Low Street and Pleasant, he lives at three fifty-three Pleasant Street, which is a historic home. And if he can do what he did here, he can also take down his home because he's in a B and put up two more or maybe three more condominiums if he wishes to sell to another individual. So we could, this monstrosity might grow if it doesn't stop here and the buck stops It's only a small portion on Pleasant Street. We shrunk this petition three times, John? Three times in consideration to an individual on the corner of Pleasant Street and Chestnut, who we later found out afterwards had bought an additional property going up Pleasant Street. He has a good amount of land that I think everybody on Chestnut and around the area should be vigilant. But we shrunk it in consideration to him. It's not a whole city of Leominster, it's only a small portion of Leominster that we would like to protect and we ask you to help us. Our neighborhood has been damaged. When I go about my day, I hear a lot of four-letter words. I'm offended by them. But the four-letter word that I am attached to and that I love is home. And that's what we are trying to protect. A home that when you go home, you have peace, silence, contentment, that you can go and get rest and start the next day to face what is before you. Our home is important to us and we hope that you will vote in our favor. We plead that you vote in our favor.
Anyone else wish to address the counsel?
Hi, my name is Bob Bell. I own two ninety and two ninety-six Pleasant Street with my brother. It's a green three-family and a white two-family. Since the last two meetings, I've done some, some homework. Because, because I have multifamilies, I'm very concerned about my hands being tied in general. We've invested a lot in these properties and I live locally. My wife is from town and I've lived here for thirty years, so I'm not one of those investors that flips. This is an investment for long-term for our, our retirement. But I did some, some homework and the, there are thirty lots listed. There are actually thirty-one, but one of them, four eighty-eight, lot five, is listed twice under Pleasant and under Low Street. So all I could do is I looked at the assessor's database. Eleven of the homes are two families or more, so multifamilies. That's thirty-seven percent of the properties that would immediately become non-conforming. Even if you don't include the three new homes that are considered multifamilies, that still makes it thirty percent. One of the multifamilies was built in. One of the multifamilies was built in nineteen forty-seven. The rest were built in nineteen hundred or earlier, including my two. I was also curious about the property in general because what I wanted to do was, so I'm an engineer, a software guy, and what I wanted to do, I'm all about data. So what I was trying to do was actually look at, I looked at all the properties, looked at the frontage, looked at the square footage, just to see what the risk is of something like this happening again. Now, any one of us now can go from what I understand, from a single-family to a two-family or from a two to a three, but there are certain regulations for frontage and square footage. And so I was trying to gather all that information, and I actually found out that the three new homes, I don't know if they were at one time one big lot or they're three separate ones now, and there's a lot of frontage. So I think that has a factor, but I don't know enough yet, and I haven't had enough time because I would have liked to have had details to say, okay, here's the risk factor. If eighty-seven percent of the homes would, could be impacted, then certainly that would be an issue. And I realize that in looking at the property, even that lot, the way it is now, and I found out today from the Planning and Development Board, that there's a shared driveway which I think is no longer allowed. So I don't know if that means there would have been two homes on the property allowed rather than three. But even based on what I can tell from looking at the information from the book about all the rules, the lot was big enough, it's still under Residence A. It, I think it's still possible it could have been split into and put up two homes. Now granted, they would have been single-family, but they could have been colonial homes. And looking up at the Hill, I think anything above a single-family would have been just overpowering no matter what. So I think the lot in general is just very problematic, and certainly adding the third home certainly made it worse. So I looked, okay, talked about that. So I looked at table of dimensions, all of those things, and I'm willing to do the work to try to figure it out, but I don't understand all the rules. If I understand the rules, then I could actually come up with some determination. I certainly understand from a homeowner perspective, the concerns of seeing that ugly development. It is ugly. And I understand wanting to protect your homes, but I also want to protect my two-family and my three-family. That's my retirement income, and I'm concerned about having my hands tied. And one of the things that I wish I asked last week or last month was, I know this is the proposal going through, and this is one way of protecting it that also limits, you know, at least thirty percent of the homeowners, is, is there another way to put protection in place, another avenue, without impacting so many of the multifamily homes? And I don't know that answer. I don't know if that's something that we, that you can discuss. I don't have a legal background. I don't know. I'm willing to pursue that option. I understand both sides, but because I own a two-family and three-family, it would immediately be non-conforming. I keep wanting to say non-compliant because of the industry that I'm in, but non-conforming. I just also want to protect my property. So I don't know if there are other options. So thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council?
Hi, again, my name's Dave Franciosi. I spoke at the last meeting, and I just want to make a commitment. Dorothy referenced a piece of property at the corner of Chestnut and Pleasant Street that I own. I'm the developer, I'm the bad guy, I guess, but the one thing I wanted to do is just come up here and say, I support everybody's position here, and I understand the emotional side and the technical side. But I made a commitment when I purchased that property, and I made a commitment to Dorothy, and I just wanted to go on the record to say that I'm proposing and I'm building two single-family houses that fit that neighborhood on that lot, and I'm not doing duplexes, is which, what I had planned in the beginning because I also live in that neighborhood. And I just wanted to go on the record because I made a promise, and she brought me up, and I just wanted to follow up. But I certainly understand all the positions, and if there is a way to modify and protect those who don't want to be on this petition without rewriting it, that would be, I guess, a good thing because I don't think one house or one lot would be big enough if they're removed, or we could look at that, but I just wanted to throw that out there. I don't know if that's available. But again, if they're in favor of moving forward and making this vote, I think you've heard enough. Let's see what happens. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the council? Second time, does anyone else wish to address the council either for or against this petition?
Joyce Goslin at twenty-five Low Street, and I'm for this petition. And as I said at the previous meeting, I just want to reiterate my position on that. Okay? And I agree with all my other constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Third and final time, is there, is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council either for or against this petition, third and final time? Okay. Do any members of the council have any final thoughts? Okay. I hear everybody loud and clear. I get it. I do think that opinion from Copeland Page is important to educate and let everybody, including the council, know the pros and cons of this move. The president can accommodate a week for the special election. I'd ask that this matter be, the public hearing remain open. We continue it for one week.
I caution you with a week. The reason is because some of the audience indicated this possibility, some of them may be on school vacation with family. And the second issue is, we can squeeze Copeland and Page, our city solicitor, but I'm not sure if they can come through by next week. So you may want to take a look at this at the next regular scheduled meeting.
Okay, that's, I mean, that's fine, two weeks.
Just one week away from that, but everyone's back for vacation.
All right. That's, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm fine either way. It's two weeks. I understand it's been a long time. I get that, and I apologize.
I agree. And the one thing I will say is, if I go for further time, it certainly isn't because I'm afraid to vote. I've been here thirty years, and I've never taken a position of not voting on something I believe in. But this is a legal issue, and it's very important on both sides. And I tend to agree with the chair that we need the information from our city attorney who's going to make a judgment on this, and that's important to us in the long run. So I can go either way, but I really think that that letter is also important. The other thing is, what is, what was the building inspector's comment? Do you have it yet?
I do. I believe he was against this. Okay, he has a, he issued a letter addressed to the Legal Affairs Committee. Members of the Legal Affairs Committee, I am in receipt of a communication dated November fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, requesting my recommendation on petition fourteen-dash-eighteen to rezone parcels on Pleasant Street and Low Street from Residence B to Residence A. After researching this matter, I have found that if this change is allowed, it will leave four houses on Chestnut Street in the RB zone. These parcels will then be unattached to any other RB properties. This appears to me to be spot zoning. This plan also creates twenty-one non-conforming properties, some of which the owners did not sign the petitions. Every property owner affected by this change should be notified. At this time, I recommend that this petition be denied. If you have any questions or need further information, please feel free to contact my office. Sincerely, Peter Nile. Now, he's, some of the concerns that he addressed, he raises, were handled or resolved by amendments to the petition, but it's still, you know, it still leaves that, that issue. And I, the city solicitor's opinion is not, it's not a judgment call. It's not like he's going to issue us a letter, yea or nay. It's, it's more of an educational assessment that we're asking for so that, you know, someone can read that letter and get an idea of what it is that's going to take place. You know, what changes are going to happen that are going to affect your property. So I, I think it's really something that benefits all the homeowners because if the council does vote to change the zoning, you're going to have an opinion that is going to give you the pros and cons, and you're going to know how this change is affecting you. So I, I mean, I just think it's, it's important for all parties concerned, but it's not, it's not something that should govern, you know, it's not, it's not a yea or nay type of letter we're looking for. It's really more of an educational assessment. But Counselor Badanza, did you?
I, I, all I'm going to suggest is that we all know that it's going to create prior non-conforming uses. There's no question about that. And when a prior non-conforming use is created, there is a bit more restriction to the, the landowner can continue the use of the property indefinitely, but there are some rules, and the primary rule is that if you're going to change it or alter the night prior non-conforming use, then you have to get a special permit and prove that the proposed use is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the current use. That's essentially what Brian Riley is going to tell us. I don't know that that changes anybody's vote, frankly. And, you know, is this an easy vote? I wouldn't say it's an easy vote because there are interests on both sides of it, but I made my position clear at the last meeting. I understand the real and present danger to that neighborhood, and as the speaker's indicated, it's not a, it's a danger that's already manifested itself in a very bad way. And I would be, if I lived in that neighborhood, I would be sort of absolutely as concerned as they are. So I'm prepared to move forward. I, I knew what my vote was two weeks ago, and my vote's the same, and I'd like to see it resolved.
So the recommendation, I think, is to continue the public hearing for two weeks.
That would be for April twenty-third, six p.m. in the council chambers.
Yes.
Recommendation is for further time?
Correct.
Okay. And the hearings continue?
Yes.
Thank you.
Get the vote, don't we?
Just vote later. You got a primary on this one?
I got a request, yeah.
Okay, so I'm sorry. Did you get the letter cleared? You got it? Just the petition requests for a continuation. Finn Rudin wants to speak on it. Do you have the letter? You have the letter?
Nine-dash-eighteen, Prime Wellness Centers grant a special permit to build a medical marijuana cultivation facility located at seventeen-seventy-one Lock Drive. Let me go to Councilor Badanza as the other member of Legal Affairs, if you have any, any questions or comments?
I don't, I understand this is a letter from the petitioner, so I don't have a difficulty with what the petitioner is requesting.
I will read this letter from, from the petitioner requesting a continuation. And I think that's still April twenty-third, or May seven?
No, it may be May fourth.
May, May fourth. Dear Lynn, as per our conversation today, please reschedule tonight's public hearing with a cultivation center on Lock Drive to the next available date on the councilor's agenda. Thank you in advance for your cooperation. Respectfully, Prime Wellness, Mago, and Jim Exharris. I will go to the public. Is there anybody that wishes to address the council? Again, is there anyone who wishes to address the council? For the third time, is there anyone who wishes to address the council in support? Is there anyone who wishes to comment in the negative? Again, is there anyone who wants to speak in opposition? For the final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Hearing none. I'll declare the public hearing continued until May fourteenth at six-thirty?
Six forty-five.
Six forty-five.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, this is a hearing before the Lemonster City Council. This is petition forty-dash-eighteen, Kristen Kelly, Planning Director. Amend Article eighteen, Section twenty-two-dash-one-oh-five of the Lemonster zoning ordinance to include language regarding recreational marijuana facilities. Good evening, Ms. Kelly.
Good evening.
And if you could just introduce yourself for the public, please.
I'm Kristen Kelly. I'm the Planning Director for Lemonster.
And you want to just give us a summary of what this petition is all about?
Recently, in Massachusetts, voters voted to allow recreational use of marijuana, or also called adult-use marijuana, and will be, they've recently finalized regulations last month. They will be processing applications this month and issuing licenses as of July first. So this is our opportunity to be sure we're addressing recreational marijuana in our zoning ordinance. So we've put forth a petition. Counselor Badanza and I have been working on a draft. You've received a copy of that draft last month, I believe, and it's been issued to the planning board for a recommendation. They have scheduled their public hearing for May seventh. So at that time, they will, that'll be advertised, and they'll open up a public hearing, and they will issue a recommendation after that point. Also, in the meantime, we've compiled a list of questions for Copeland and Page. Obviously, this is a unique situation, and so there's a lot of confusion about the regulations and, and what's allowed and the difference between medical marijuana and recreational marijuana. They are operated, are overseen by two different They are operated, or overseen by two different state authorities. So I've attended some informational sessions with KP Law explaining the regulations and how they can be applied. We've also reviewed other drafts and past bylaws and ordinances from other communities in Massachusetts. Recently, just comparing them to what we've put together in a draft to see if we're, you know, in keeping with those regulations. Thinking it is, but I think we do need to incorporate some additional information from KP Law into this draft as well as incorporate comments from the Planning Board if they had any questions or recommendations. So that's where we're at right now.
So procedurally, what other input are you, what other agencies are you looking for input from?
The Planning Board.
Yeah.
Copeland and Page. And any questions that the city council may have or potentially the public.
Okay, so the Planning Board still needs to have their hearing?
Yes.
On this matter?
It'll be May 7th.
Okay, and has Copeland and Page seen any draft of this yet or they have? I thought they had, yeah. Okay.
Attorney Brian Riley did review our draft back even February or early March and did have some additional comments, but since that time, the regu, the final regulations did get approved. And so a few other questions came up to that. I did send an email to Brian Riley and Catherine Loffman at KP Law. This was dated Friday, March 30th. And I have a number of questions here that we had, that came up in, in between. I haven't received a response from them, but I anticipate I will in time for the Planning Board meeting certainly. And then this meeting.
Okay. And this might be, Counselor Badanza, I know you helped draft this. This might be a better question for you. Is, is there a need for our local ordinance to adopt the mass regulations?
Well.
Or, I mean, is there an independent need to do that or do they, does it just sort of happen because they are regulations?
Well, the primary, I mean, the thrust of what we're doing is zoning. So what the council needs to know, Kristen and I attended one of those Cannabis Control Commission forums with Joel Bard from KP Law. Counselor Cormier was in attendance as well. I thought it was helpful and informative, but one of the things the council needs to know is that there's a specific part of the, of the regulation and statute that says if you don't have zoning, then you are open to adult-use marijuana business, period. So there's a theory, as you might know, Counselor, that if it's not zoned, then it's not permitted. Well, that's reversed for marijuana. So the fact that we don't have zoning is not protective. From a policy, policy perspective, the, you know, the primary question is what zone? And unlike, unlike our neighbor, at least the people who have been working on it thus far. And ultimately, the entire council as well as Planning Board will have to grapple with that. What is being recommended thus far is it's limited to the industrial zone as it was with, as it was with medical marijuana. And the other large policy question is how many licenses? Well, one of the questions that Kristen will be submitting to KP Law is does the limitation of 20% of your package taralica licenses apply to just recreational dispensaries or other types of recreational slash adult uses? I, I've read the statute and I think it applies only to dispensaries, but we're going to get, you know, a con, a confirming answer from KP on that. Interestingly, that'll always almost come out to a fraction. And the commission hasn't actually dealt with the question of whether you round up or round down the fraction, but it looks like we're in the same neighborhood as Fitchburg. It looks like we couldn't, we wouldn't have to have more than four of these uses. There's a lot more to it. I won't go into too much detail at this juncture, but procedurally, what has to happen is the petition needs to come from the Planning Board. So the first step is to have the Planning Board petition is going to be. And then they'll have to make a recommendation on their own petition. And it'll come to, come before us. And so hopefully by the time they actually petition us and make a recommendation, it'll be refined from what you saw back in March that, the document that Kristen and I worked on together. From a timing perspective, we'll be fine. You can't make a application unless you're hardship case until mid-April. You can't make an application to the CCC until you've had a community impact meeting and you have a host agreement. It's a little bit backwards from what medical was. Medical, the host agreement came after. You know, and the adult, the host agreement comes first. So there's a fair amount of process that someone trying to get into this business has to go through before they can even apply to the CCC for a license. So far, we don't have any knowledge of anybody who's, although that may have changed since I saw you last week.
No, not that I've heard.
Yeah.
But then again, it's not, the special permit is through the city council, so I'm not sure if anyone's been contacted.
They, they, they would have to develop a community impact meeting before they could even apply for the license. So I, I think we've got plenty of time to adopt an ordinance. But we need to move along.
Yeah. So this, this particular ordinance is dealing with, with use and zoning?
Right. So we're going to, we're going to deal, what we're going to do is we're going to create a definitional section, which is very important to the document, that'll address all the various types of marijuana businesses and uses. And then some of those, some of the zoning, zoning district will apply in all cases. We're tinkering with the buffer zone requirements. We actually may be more restrictive than the law permits. That's a question we have to Copeland and Page. How restrictive can we be? And we have a category, I think, that the law doesn't address. Another question we have to Copeland and Page. And then, you know, do we want to adopt the minimum of the threshold? And all of those things. So we're going to combine it, so there'll be one ordinance for marijuana. So ultimately, what we'll be doing, when it, when it comes and reaches us is we'll be deleting the medical marijuana ordinance that we created a number of years ago and replacing it with a comprehensive ordinance that addresses all of the marijuana businesses.
So is it, is the doc, the document before us, is it fair to classify it as a work in progress?
Yes.
That's?
Clearly.
That's filed just so we can keep pace?
Yes. And I, and I think we, we will get a pretty good document when the pla, when, when KP's done and the Planning Department's done, I think we'll get a pretty good document down here.
Okay.
We may still have some questions, of course. We have an obligation to do our own due diligence as a council. And we'll have our hearings and et cetera. But I think as long as we keep the process moving along in an orderly fashion, we'll get there and get it done.
Okay, and then, and then just one more question and I'll, I'll defer to Counselor Frida and then the other counselors. I, I understand that the municipal, the city is concerned about zoning and use
Right.
on their end, but in order to have the protections of the C, the code of mass regulations, do we have to incorporate those or do those stand alone?
No, those stand alone. There's a ton of them. There's packaging requirements.
Yeah.
Especially, one, one, one that concerned me is, you know, with respect to the edibles. How, you know, how do those be prevented from getting in the hands of children?
Yeah.
It's an attractive nuisance. I mean, you've got cookies, brownies, things like that. It kind of scares me, to be honest with you. And they talked at length about, they borrowed a lot of the regulations from, from Colorado, frankly. And they, there's a lot of packaging requirements and there's an amount of drug that can be in the edibles and they're at the low end of that percentage. The industry was looking for a higher. They wanted to sort of go slow with that. So there's a host of stuff that is part of the state code of mass regulations that we don't have to deal with.
Okay, but so the revenue?
The vast amount of what we're dealing with that we haven't, we've already dealt with the tax. And we've already dealt with consumption in public. So basically, what's left for us to deal with is largely zoning.
Okay. And then, so the protections of the code of mass regulations?
Will extend to us.
Extend to us.
Yeah.
And we don't have to take any affirmative action?
No.
Okay. Counselor Frida, did you have any questions?
Yeah, Kristen, were you originally directed by the Planning Board to draft these ordinances? Did they take a vote to have you do that?
Um, not originally. I did speak with Chairman John Souza about this and I think it, back in the fall, there was a conversation. But the final regulations were announced and there was some confusion as to when they would be out. And so it was not, they weren't, it wasn't brought to my attention to, to be working on this, no.
Because I know your name is here, but basically Counselor Badanza wrote the, the ordinance.
Um, I think.
But it has to come from the Planning Board, so your name is on it instead of Counselor Badanza's name, basically.
I spoke with Counselor Badanza. He said, I have an idea on what we could do with this by, you know, incorporating the existing medical ordinance. And we discussed it and thought it was a good idea. He did edit the document and I reviewed it and thought it was a really good first start. And then I ran it by the Planning Board, who also agreed that it was the, the direction that we should go in. And then formally.
Was that before our recommendation was sent to them? Or was it when the recommenda, we asked for the recommendation?
What recommendation?
The recommendation on this petition.
Oh, that you sent back to the Planning Board?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, it was. They had to vote to send the petition. So they, they're aware of the process that it came about. And they voted to be the petitioner and sent it forward. And I wrote it.
Any other questions?
Yep.
Any other counselors have any questions at this time? Counselor Badanza?
I just, you know, thank you for clarifying that, Kristen, but someone had to do it. So, you know, the bottom line is, is that, you know, I'll, I'll take the blame for it, but someone had to do it. I, I just felt this thing wasn't going anywhere and I felt if we adopted a moratorium, we'd be in the same boat at the end of the moratorium. It, it had to be dealt with. So I welcome all of the input from every counselor. Kristen has had, entertained, was willing to entertain questions when she came down here from everybody. I, I presented questions. I'm not sure anybody else did, but we're moving forward. And we need to protect the community and that's what we're going to do.
No, I think, I think it's good. Let me, let me ask you. Procedurally, from the city council's perspective, is this something, is the timeline so tight that we should further time this as we're adding to it and receiving input and allowing people to study it? Or should, or is this something that should be tabled for study? What, what's, what's your feeling on that?
I think we should further time it.
Further time it? Okay. Because it seems to me it's a somewhat, not a real tight timeline, but it's there.
We all have a lot of extra time.
Yeah, okay. Any other counselors? Oh, Counselor Frida, I'm sorry.
I'd like to get, can I get all the communications that you have back and forth regarding these? Everything that took place? I took exception to looking at Copeland and Page's last bill. There was a discussion with you and I'm going to assume Brian Riley about moratorium and drawing up a draft. I'm not quite sure why you would.
Counselor, if I may, who are you referring to as you?
Counselor Badanza.
Well, let me, let me, let me respond to it. It wasn't me. I didn't, I didn't speak to Brian Riley at once about this. So I find it ironic that you would question that who fought to get rid of Rule 34 against my negative vote for Rule 34, which allowed counselors to speak to the city solicitor directly outside of a vote of the council. I find that amazing that you would state that.
Well, through the, through the chair, it, because it was on the bill. It's not, it wasn't just.
You speak to them for free and I speak to them on, on the clock?
Oh, okay. I see how that works, okay.
Yeah, I see how it works too.
Yeah, I'm done.
Any other counselors? Counselor Fekley?
I just want to make a comment following up on what the Woodford Counselor said. I, I too was at the meeting of CCC last week was the one that.
That's right. I'm sorry about that.
That's okay. No, that's, that's not the reason why I brought that up. And when Counselor Badanza indicated that the, anybody that wanted to come to the city needed to do it in beforehand. It's six months. They have to have a hearing, a community hearing, six months beforehand. So that would, even if somebody walked in, yes, you know, tomorrow would be October. So I just wanted everybody to know that.
Okay.
Six months, there is a timeline on it.
Okay. Any other, Counselor Ardinger?
Yes, you know, my biggest concerns with this, you know, whole issue of the marijuana has been the multi-use facilities and the social use facilities. And it's my understanding, and maybe I stand corrected, you can address that if I'm incorrect, is that those regulations aren't going to be posted until October. Is that right?
I do believe that in the final, the final approved regulations, they left out, purposely left out any details on those particular types of facilities because it was, they felt it was trying to tackle too much at once. They're, you know, they're, they're really not clear on the impact and the the, the different conditions regarding those. They may said this at that meeting, at the Cannabis Control Commission informational meeting, that they wanted to focus on getting this started and dealing with the, call it the basics, the, the main points. And then they will, I think they have a study, you know, a, a subcommittee that is looking into how to regulate those types of uses and that will be coming down the road. One of the questions we have for KP is concerning on-premises consumption such as a marijuana cafe, et cetera. I understand that these details have been left out of the final regulations until more time is spent developing the details. Should the city be proactive and include some language on these types of facilities in our draft ordinance? So that we can at least have something in place when they do get to that point and come up with regulations for that.
Well, that's, that's what I was looking for because you wanted that to be addressed now and not wait until October to have to re-draft something.
Might as well, yeah, might as well get that now.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Counselor Marsham?
Just a point of information, May 14th looks jam-packed. So if you're thinking of continuing this, we may be looking at 28th?
So.
14th is not bad. Well, you're going to have, you're going to have Prime Wellness down here on the 14th.
Okay.
And you're, you know, so I'm just wondering if you want to, it's up to you, committee.
May 28th is Memorial Day.
Yeah.
What's that? I'm sorry.
Sorry, May 28th is Memorial Day.
Yeah.
Let me, uh.
Thank you.
Let me ask Counselor Badanza and Ms. Kelly. What do you think, given the timeline, given the input that we're expecting from so many different parties, what do you, in, in giving, giving your hard work thus far, what do you think is a good game plan for us to follow so that we can be in line to be effective as we're getting this information?
You, you, your agenda will schedule a hearing, right?
Yep.
Which is going to be?
May 7th.
May 7th.
The public hearing.
It's the public hearing. And if they vote to petition us.
We, we, we've already petitioned. There, this is a recommendation. So this is their recommendation.
So, so the, it would seem the 14th makes sense.
May 14th?
Yeah.
And then, does a subcommittee meeting between now and then make sense?
Um, yeah.
Okay, and I, I think, given the circumstance, there's probably a subcommittee meeting closer to May 14th.
Right. Probably between those two dates.
Yeah, okay. And when was the Planning Board date again? I'm sorry.
May 7th.
May 7th, okay. Okay, anyone?
The council president just said the 14th is jam-packed?
He did, but then he changed. Yeah, I guess they, they were mistaken.
You're just on the same night as Prime Wellness.
Any, Counselor Frida, anything more? Any other counselors have anything else?
John.
Counselor Marsham?
Hey, um, first of all, I want to commend you. In my years of working for the city of Leominster and as an elected official, I have never known a professional as amazing as you when it comes down to being the Planning Director for the city. I mean that. I wouldn't say that if it wasn't true. I have a tremendous amount of respect for your work. Your guidance, your leadership, and in this particular case, your willingness to work with a colleague of ours in order to be proactive to help the Planning Board to move forward with probably one of the most contentious items in the Commonwealth's history. So I would. So I wanna thank you from myself as a council president for taking such a proactive stance and your willingness to be open-minded and work with a counselor. Counselor, there's no, it's not necessary to apologize for leadership and being proactive. And we all do it. And it's, quite frankly, it's great to see people stepping up. So I would just wanna say thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Counsel.
Anybody else? All right. I think the recommendation at this time, I'll defer, you know, to the, to the other members of my committee, but the recommendation at this time would be further time and to continue the public hearing until May 14th, 2017?
What time?
Uh, 2018, that's right, yeah. That's why they call it dope.
6:15 is a pipe dream.
6:15?
We'll work them all in.
All right, 6:15. And we'll establish a subcommittee meeting later on in the evening.
I'll say, Counselor?
Just to make sure, Counsel Freedom, you okay? Counsel Badanza, you good? That's it?
Hey, Kristin, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna quickly open the public forum. This is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on any matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions. However, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. We had, we had a few people speak in the hearing earlier this evening. So I'm just gonna open it up in general if anybody would like to address the council. Second, please state your name and address and on what matter you would like to speak.
Melissa Bible, 178 Fifth Street, Lomond Star. And I'm here again regarding Petition 3318. It's my understanding you're not voting tonight, but while there continues to be discussion about the petition, some things to keep in mind. I've been to two city council meetings where no one has spoken in support of this petition, including the petitioner himself. I've been to a planning board meeting where no one has spoken in support of this petition. You have over 100 signatures of neighbors that are not in support of this petition. In respect to the families who live in the Pleasant Street, Low Street area, they know their neighborhood, they know what they want, they know what they don't want. And those voices are being heard.
Are you referring to a different petition?
I'm referring to a different petition.
And what number is that, ma'am?
That is the 1418.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. They know what they want, they know what they don't want for their neighborhood. The multifamily developments that have been put there and have been referred to as an abomination are something that our neighborhood would frankly love to see in comparison to what is being petitioned to be zoned as. And as discussion continues, I just hope that you take into consideration the specific neighborhood in there wants. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Would any other member of the audience like to address the council on any matter before the council? Second call and a third and final call. If not, the public forum is closed. We'll begin the meeting in one minute. Yeah. Thank you for all the hearing work tonight, folks. The scheduled meeting for this evening, April 9th, 2018, is now in session. Please stand and join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just as for all.
We'll begin the meeting with a roll call vote, beginning with the Honorable Counselor, Counsel Freedom. Counsel Dobrowski.
Present.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Counsel Fekley.
Present.
Counsel Badanza.
Present.
Counsel Arndinger.
Present.
Counsel Cormier.
Present.
I shall record as present. Eight members are present this evening. Madam Clerk, thank you very much. Is the Chairwoman of Records ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. I have the minutes of the hearing for the city council and the city council meeting of March 12th, 2018. I find them to be in good form and I ask that they be placed on file.
Counselor, the recommendation, the comments, questions, or revisions. If not, so moved. We'll now move on to communications from the May, beginning with Communication 44.
C44, relative to the appropriation of $80,000 to the Police Department overtime account, same to be transferred from the Police Department salary and wages account.
Communication 44 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Yes, Mr. President. First time on the calendar. Regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course for Communication 44. We now move to petitions, first time on the calendar, beginning with 55-18.
5518, Best Buy Store LP, renew the second-hand dealer's license for Best Buy Stores LP, number 1433, located at Orchard Hill Park Drive.
Petition 55-18 is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Yes, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course, with recommendations to the Treasurer and Collector and the Police Department. And we could actually take 5618 and 5818 and block.
If there's no objection from the council, Madam Clerk, continue, please.
5618, GameStop Incorporated, renew the second-hand dealer's license for GameStop number 3594, located at 26 Orchard Hill Park Drive. 5718, GameStop Incorporated, renew the second-hand dealer's license for GameStop number 1485, located at 100 Commercial Road. 5818, Christopher Revad, grant a transient vendor's license for the sale of flowers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll again refer to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means for clarification on your, your action.
Yes, Mr. President. Again, first time on the agenda, regular course, with recommendations from the Treasurer and Collector and the Police Department.
Thank you, Madam Chair. 55-18 through 58-18 to be given regular course with referral to the Treasurer and Collector and the Police Department. Thank you. We'll now move on to 59-18, Madam Clerk.
5918, James Whitney and 10 registered voters, amend the zoning ordinance to add drive-through to allowable uses under the MU1 zoning.
59-18 is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
First time on the calendar, Mr. President, regular course with a referral to the Planning Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Building Inspector, and the Board of Health. And I know the clerk handed me a list-
May 14th, 7 o'clock.
We need to have a public hearing May 14th at 7 o'clock PM.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, the recommendation for further time on 59-18 with a hearing on May 14th at 7:00 PM in the council chambers, referrals to the Planning Board, ZBA, Building Inspector, and Board of Health. All those in favor of the hearing date, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, the hearing date has been established. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Now move on to reappointments. We have, can we take them in block, Andrew?
Yes.
All right, thanks very much.
Okay, reappointments. Board of Appeals, Stephen A. DeCarolis, term to expire 4/15/2021. Board of Appeals, alternate member, Lee Barron, term to expire April 15th, 2019. Board of Health, Dr. Peter Lanza, term to expire 4/15/2021. Conservation Commission, Paul Colombo, term to expire 2021. Council on Agent, Adriana Farcas and Benny David, term to expire 4/15/2021. Cultural Commission, Eileen O'Leary, term to expire April 15th, 2021. Disability Commission, Gail Turbine and Marty Turbine, terms to expire 4/15/2021. Historical Commission, Donald Pimmarini, Michael Carrigan, Chester Carter, and Patrick Lapointe, terms to expire 4/15/2021. Housing Authority, Sylvia Lamb, term to expire 4/15/2023. Library Board of Trustees, Mark Badanza and Lawrence N. L. Enenford?
Enford.
Enford, terms to expire 4/15/2021. License Commission, James J. Kelly Jr., term to expire 4/15/2024. Planning Board, Patrick Perla and Fred Fredericks, terms to expire 4/15/2023. Recreation Commission, John Chicalini, Thomas Bissinette, and Richard Green, terms to expire 4/15/2021. Recreation Director, Judith Sumner, term to expire 4/15/2021. Director of Veteran Services, Richard Votor, term to expire 4/15/2021.
The reappointments and block are conveyed to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the agenda, regular course, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regular course and block. We'll now move on to matters before the city council. Excuse me. There, there's no action or discussion on them. Do you have anything? Oh, sure, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
I know we talked about this a few years ago. But can we just get an overview on these boards of commission, just to see? There seems to be a lot of quarrels that aren't met and meetings that have to be canceled.
Yeah, I was gonna bring that-
But most of these people, I think, are pretty attentive, but-
Yeah, I have some comments.
If there's somebody who just doesn't show up for any meetings, I think it's important.
Right. I, I agree with you that, you know, this, this group seems to be people that we know very well, but I do have some comments I'm gonna be making under new business. But thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll now move on to matters before the city council, beginning with Ways and Means and Veterans Affairs. First of all, Petition 44-18. Is the Chairwoman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. And if nobody has any issue with it, I'd like to take these in block.
And how far are you gonna go down, ma'am?
I'm gonna go 4418, all the way down to 5118.
Oh, perfect. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. 4418, Fred R. Two-Signot, renew the second-hand dealer's license for 92 Pleasant Street and 38 Spruce Street. 4518, John Andres Zajon, review the second-hand dealer's license for Georgia's Fine Jewellers, Inc. at 255 North Street. 4618, Roger Cormier, review the second-hand dealer's license for Crown Jewelers at 12 Lindell Ave. 4718, Nellie Molina, review the second-hand dealer's license for J&amp;J Consignment at 285 Central Street. 4818, Paul F. Rulo, renew the second-hand dealer's license for Protech Solutions at 4, at 345 Central Street. 4918, Kenneth Goldberg, renew the second-hand dealer's license for Sterling Jewellers, Inc., doing business as Cave Jewelers, number 1285, at 100 Commercial Road. 5018, George Delgai, renew the second-hand dealer's license for Degon, Inc., 100 Commercial Road. 5118, Echo ATM LLC, review the second-hand dealer's license for 100 Commercial Road. So we asked for recommendations at the last meeting from the Treasurer and Collector and the Police Department. The Treasurer and Collector did send their recommendation that they have no objection to the petitions, including all of them. And the Police Department as well indicated that they know of no good cause to oppose the renewal of these various second-hand dealer's licenses. So with those recommendations, Mr. President, I would recommend that we grant renewal of the licenses asked for in Petitions 4418 through and including 5118. And I will ask you to poll my committee.
Okay. Before you poll the committee, so the Police Department recommendation reflects they are in compliance with the local legislation. Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, I'll move the, I'll move the floor to the second member of the clerk, Counsel Freedom.
Yeah, I agree.
Third member, Counsel Dobrowski.
I agree.
Restate your position, please.
Yes, we have a unanimous committee decision to approve or grant the renewal of the second-hand dealer's licenses, 4418 through and including 5118.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Counselor, a favorable recommendation to grant in block 44-18 through 51-18. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, confirmation has taken place on the petitions. Thank you. We'll now move on to Legal Affairs, beginning with 14-18. Is the Chairman ready to report?
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition 1418. John P. Bulger and Dorothy Rulo and 10 registered voters rezone the following parcels on Pleasant Street and Low Street, from Residence B to Residence A. Pleasant Street, West Side, map 481, lots 19 and 20, map 521, lot 1 and 39, map 488, lots 1, 5, 6, 7, 8. Map 494, lots 18, 3A, 31A, 32A, 32B, and 32C. Pleasant Street, East Side, map 561, lots 35A, 36A, 37A. Map 340, lots 1 and 2, map 410, lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 22 and 23. Map 496, lots 1, 2, and 3, and Low Street, map 488, lot 5. We had a public hearing. A lot of people from the neighborhood spoke. Most of them spoke in favor of this petition. I brought up the fact that there is an opinion letter from Copeland and Page that we are waiting for. So my recommendation is to give this further time and continue it to May, April 23rd, 2018, at 6 o'clock PM.
Sure.
And I just ask you to check with my committee.
I'll go to the second member, Counsel Freedom.
I agree.
Third member, Counsel Badanza.
I'm opposed.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, recommendation?
Recommendation is for further time and to continue this matter to April 23rd, 2018, at 6 o'clock AM.
PM, I'm sorry, PM.
PM, geez, yeah. And I'd also ask the clerk if we could send another letter to Mr. Riley, you know, reminding him that we need this and that it's-
We are not gonna send Copeland and Page a letter. We are going to call him every day until you get your recommendation.
Yeah, I, I may call him, I may call him as well.
Feel free to. You have the authority. Call him, please, and we'll do it from all, all three angles here.
Okay.
Okay? I know they're busy. This has been going on a long time, so we appreciate them moving forward with it. Counselor, the recommendation read on 14-18 for further time with a continuation of an open hearing for April 23rd, 6:00 PM in the council chambers. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of six to two, the recommendation is granted. We'll now move on to 33-18. Is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes. Petition 3318. Dean J. Mazzarella changed the zoning of eight lots of land from the Residence B zoning district to the commercial zoning district, located along the north side of Mechanic Street and the south side of the unimproved portion of Glendale Street, and also the unimproved Milton Street and adjacent, adjacent portion of Glendale Street, all as shown on a plan entitled, "Plan to Accompany Petition for Zoning Change, Lomond Star Mass, Prepared for Dean J. Mazzarella, dated January 10th, 2018, by Whitman and Bingham Associates, LLC." We have a public hearing scheduled for April 23rd, 2018, at 6:30 PM. Recommendation accordingly is further time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, the recommendation on 33-18 for further time. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing. Further time has been awarded to 33-18 with a continued hearing on April 20th, or hearing on April 23rd, 2018, 6:30 PM in the council chambers. Thank you. We now move on to page five of the agenda, 39-18. Is the Chairman ready to report of Legal Affairs?
Actually, I would recuse myself from that.
I apologize. Okay, I'll yield the floor to the clerk, Counsel Freedom.
39-18, Prime Wellness Centers, grant a special permit to build a medical marijuana cultivation facility located at 1771 Lock Drive. We continue the hearing tonight at the petitioner's request. So the recommendation, and I'll go to the other member of Legal Affairs, could be for further time.
Counsel Badanza?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that.
Recommendations for further time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The recommendation on 39-18 is for further time with a continuation of the hearing to May 14th, 6:45 PM in the council chambers. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of that- If not, all those in favor of their recommendation, please indicate in usual manner. Those opposed, further time has been awarded by a vote of seven to nothing. Thank you. We'll now move on to forty dash eighteen. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Forty eighteen Kristen Kelly, Planning Director. Amend Article eighteen, Section twenty-two dash one oh five of the Lemmister zoning ordinance to include language regarding recreational marijuana facilities. We had a public hearing this evening. The petitioner essentially indicated that the proper game plan is to give this further time so we can track all the other agencies that are gonna be giving input into this ordinance so that we are gonna be timely with the relatively strict time constraints that we're gonna be under. So the recommendation is further time to continue the public hearing to May fourteenth, two thousand eighteen at six fifteen PM.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilors heard the recommendation read on forty dash eighteen for further time and a continuation of the hearing to May fourteenth at six fifteen PM in the council chambers. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, further time has been awarded. Mr. Chairman, forty-one dash eighteen, are you ready to report?
I am. Petition forty-one eighteen Kristen Kelly, Planning Director. Amend Article eleven, Section twenty-two dash sixty of the Lemmister zoning ordinance to add language requiring deep observation hole testing for stormwater infiltration slash detention areas. We have a public hearing scheduled for April twenty-third, two thousand eighteen at seven o'clock PM. Accordingly, the recommendation is further time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilors heard that recommendation read for further time on forty-one dash eighteen. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Councilor Frida?
Not just this one, but as a member of Legal Affairs, forty dash eighteen and forty-one dash eighteen. Can we send another letter to the building inspector? I think it's totally unacceptable that we get a letter back saying, "I have no recommendation on this petition at this time." He's the zoning officer and the building inspector. I think we need to get an opinion from him on these issues as we're considering them.
We can ask that. That's not a problem. You're looking at forty eighteen plus forty-one eighteen?
Yeah, I'm looking at both his referrals back.
Okay.
On both of those, and he's...
Right.
Because I have no recommendation at this time.
Okay. All right. Well, we can't order him, but we can request it.
No, we can request it again as a building inspector.
Absolutely, sure. Okay. I'll have a conversation with him, see if he can weigh in. Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions on forty-one dash eighteen? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation for further time, please indicate in usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, further time has been awarded for forty-one dash eighteen with the hearing set for April twenty-third at seven PM in the council chambers. Mr. Chairman, forty-three dash eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition forty-three eighteen Jim Raypass SVP and Mike Stanley, CEO of Transit X. Grant an easement to Transit X LLC for the construction of a podway along municipal rights of way. We do have a couple of letters back. We have a letter dated April ninth, two thousand eighteen from Michael Goldman, interim chief of police. Dear City Clerk Bouchard, in reference to Communication forty-three eighteen referred to me by Legal Affairs, I offer no recommendation on this. This project has not been presented to the Police Department in any detail, and our lack of understanding of it prohibits any reasoned and informed recommendation. Sincerely, Michael Goldman, interim chief. We also have a letter dated April third, two thousand eighteen from Kristen Kelly, Director of Planning and Development. Dear Ms. Bouchard, at a regularly scheduled planning board meeting on April second, two thousand eighteen, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend further considering this petition in the future for this mode of transportation in viable areas of the city. The planning board did not vote to recommend that an easement be granted at this time. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact my office. Sincerely, Kristen Kelly. You know, I'm not sure. I wasn't present at the last hearing. I don't know if there were any other recommendations that were made. At this point, unless anyone else thinks differently, at this point, I think we'd probably table this matter for study. Maybe have some type of, you know, subcommittee meeting at some point, invite them down, and maybe they can explain to us as well as the Police Department exactly what they're trying to do.
Okay. I yield the floor to the second member and the third member.
Yeah, I think that makes perfect sense. It's devoid of any detail. No idea what's going on here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can you restate your position, please?
The recommendation, unanimous recommendation from Legal Affairs is to give Petition forty-three eighteen to have that tabled for study at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilors heard the recommendation read to table forty-three dash eighteen. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Councilor Shalfo Zefra.
Yeah, thank you very much. There was one additional referral that was submitted from the DPW director, Mr. Versine. And he says that the DPW requests that more information be submitted. Also, the petition references deed book eight oh six, page sixty-nine. This is the southeast Weldfield property. So this is in our watershed, I think, or in our Weldfield, proposed anyways. So I agree with the Legal Affairs chairperson that we need to table this for study.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the floor? Councilor Bonanza?
Yeah, my concern is that we spend any money on this. So, I mean, I'm sure that the Weldfield is a typo, but if we table it for study, I think that will protect us. They need to come up with a whole lot more detail. And frankly, it's such an ambitious proposal, it would seem to me that we'd have to set some kind of ground rules for who's gonna pay for figuring all of this out.
Yep.
So this whole thing really has to start in the mayor's office.
Right.
Not with us and not with the recommendation for an easement by the planning board under any circumstance. Makes no sense whatsoever.
No.
Okay, thank you. Councilors again heard the recommendation read for tabling forty-three eighteen. Again, are there any other comments? Councilor Ondinger?
Just one. You know, I attended the planning board hearing where they presented their, some of their concepts this past week. And it's a very interesting project, but it's such a massive project, if you look at it, that there are a number of questions that we have to ask. You know, where are they gonna park all these pods, for example? What about the aesthetics of the poles that hold this monorail up there? So the further, the tabling is certainly the best way to go at this point. You know, if they can give us good details, it would be interesting to see what the project looks like.
Hey, thank you. I'm visioning the Jetsons.
Yes.
He had a sample of the pod.
It's amazing.
The planning board made it.
Looks like a little mini car that's elevated and, you know, zip around the city.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation to table, please indicate in usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, tabling has tabled. The petition forty-three eighteen has been tabled. Mr. Chairman, fifty-two dash eighteen.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Petition fifty-two eighteen Officer Patrick Breznerhand. Request the designated handicap parking space be created on the north side of the Gallagher Building where there are currently four parking spaces on Miriam Avenue. We do have a letter from interim chief of police, Michael Goldman. Dear City Clerk Bouchard, in reference to Communication fifty-two of two thousand eighteen referred to me by the Legal Affairs Committee on March twenty-six, two thousand eighteen, authored this petition. This space is necessary as the only space on the north side of the Gallagher Building to place such a space and adhere to the ADA. This building already employs a person disabled under the law, therefore this space is imperative. Sincerely, Michael Goldman, interim chief of police. My recommendation would be to grant Petition fifty-two eighteen. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I refer to the clerk, Councilor Frida. The third member, Councilor Bonanza?
I concur.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
The unanimous recommendation is to grant Petition fifty-two eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilors heard that recommendation read to grant fifty-two dash eighteen. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, fifty-two eighteen's been granted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll now move to fifty-three dash eighteen. Are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition fifty-three eighteen Paula Deacon. Accept mass general law, Chapter seventy-two, Section seventy-one F. Non-resident or foster care students. Deposit of tuition payments and state reimbursement for the purposes of establishing a new revolving fund for the deposit of tuitions from other districts. We got a couple of letters, recommendations. One dated April ninth, two thousand eighteen from Glenn Fratto, the school business administrator. He actually writes relative to two items, but I'll read the letter in its entirety. But this particular item is fifty-three eighteen. City Clerk Bouchard, there are two items on the April ninth agenda that relate to the school department. Items fifty-three eighteen and fifty-four eighteen as follows. Fifty-three eighteen relates to establishing a new revolving fund for the deposit of tuitions from other districts. Like the existing school choice revolving fund, establishing a new fund to accept tuitions for the Center of Technical Excellence and Innovation and the Lemmister Center for Excellence will allow the school department the opportunity to deposit tuition revenues in a fund from which related program expenses can be paid. The tuition rates for non-resident students attending CTEI or LCE will be more than double the amount received for school choice students. Item fifty-four eighteen, which was given regular course, but I'll finish reading this, relates to allowing the city purchasing agent to enter into a contract for school department. Photocopier needs for up to five years. At this time, the school department, in collaboration with city purchasing agent Greg Chapdolane, is considering options under state bids for this purpose. As school business administrator, I support both agenda items. Sincerely, Glenn Fratto. We also have a letter dated March twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen from the city comptroller. Dear city councilors, please be advised that Petition fifty-three eighteen was referred to the city comptroller for a recommendation. The city comptroller recommends that the statute be adopted. Respectfully submitted, John Richards, city comptroller, straight and to the point. My recommendation would be to grant Petition fifty-three eighteen. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
I yield the floor to the clerk.
I agree.
Third member?
I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Restate, please.
The unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee, Mr. President, is to grant Petition fifty-three eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilors heard that recommendation read to grant fifty-three dash eighteen. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, fifty-three eighteen's been granted. Mr. Chairman, great night tonight. Good job.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to City of Lemmister financial report. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. City began the fiscal year on July one with fourteen million, five hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars in the stabilization fund through the appropriation that we're about to take up, C forty-three. The total amount taken from the stabilization fund through the fiscal year is four million, six hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars, leaving a balance of nine million, nine hundred and six thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to Communication forty-three. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. C forty-three relative to the appropriation of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the fire department overtime account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Along with the communication from the mayor is a letter from the fire chief attached. I read it into the record, dated March sixth, addressed to Mayor Mazzarella. This communication is regarding the same, the status of the fire department public safety overtime account. The fire department started the fiscal year with one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which now has a balance of approximately two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Listened below is a summary of our overtime requirements separate from normal overtime. Two firefighters out on long-term sick leave awaiting job-related disability retirement approvals. Two firefighters out on job-related injuries awaiting job-related disability retirement approvals. One firefighter vacancy for two months due to a retirement. Five members attending the fire academy. One firefighter out for four months on military leave. One firefighter in sick leave bank for six weeks. One lieutenant suspended for one month. Thank you for your continued support. Should you have any questions or concerns regarding the above, please feel free to contact this office. Sincerely, Robert A. Sidlow, the second, chief of the department. It would be my position, Mr. President, to grant C dash forty-three, and I'll ask you to check with the other member of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield the floor to the clerk, Councilor Cormier.
I'm in agreement.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, the unanimous recommendation of finance this evening is to grant C dash forty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilors heard that recommendation read to grant Communication forty-three. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, Communication forty-three has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Ordered that the sum of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars be appropriated to the fire department overtime account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilors heard that recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, the order's been adopted. Mr. Chairman, Petition fifty-four dash eighteen.
Yes, Mr. President. Fifty-four eighteen Greg C. Chapdolane and Paula Deacon. Allow the purchasing agent to enter into a contract for the school department's photocopier needs for a five-year period. As we knew under the state statute, a period of that, a contract of that length requires our approval. This is oftentimes done for us to give the purchasing entity the ability to get a better deal on the state bid list. It would be my position to grant fifty-four eighteen, which of course is supported by the business agent for the schools as well as the superintendent. And I'll ask you to check with my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield the floor to Councilor Cormier, the clerk.
I agree.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
The unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant fifty-four dash eighteen.
Councilors heard that recommendation read to grant fifty-four dash eighteen. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of their recommendation, please indicate in usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, the petition is granted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll now move on to old business. Do we have any items under old business? Councilor Dobrowski first.
I just need to schedule a subcommittee meeting. And I prefer it to be a few days before May fourteenth.
What would you like?
May tenth, Thursday, May tenth. Is that good for the other members?
It works for me.
Councilor Frida, it's a Thursday.
Looks okay.
And what time you looking for?
I, I don't, five thirty, that's available.
Yeah, you're the better.
Yeah, does that work for you, five thirty? Councilor Bonanza?
Five thirty is okay with me.
Okay.
Okay.
So there will be a Legal Affairs Subcommittee meeting on Thursday, May tenth, at five thirty in the council chambers. Thank you. Any other items?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Frida?
Yeah, just a question again. It won't pre-cash. Anything yet?
I inquired today again and no update.
It's still the school department that's holding it up?
I didn't have that conversation. Just the only word was no update. So I don't know what...
Do?
I don't know what the update, the holdup is.
We're gonna be busy at one point.
I would think.
Lot of communications now.
Yeah, can't be going too much longer.
I know, I know. Councilor Frida, anything else? Any other items under old business? Thank you. We'll move on to new business. We have an election of the city clerk, Linay Bouchard, term to expire April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And we're gonna hold her to it. Councilor, factually, chairwoman of Ways and Means, I yield the floor to you.
You took the words right out of my mouth. Yes, election of city clerk, Linay Bouchard, term to expire April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. First time on the agenda, Mr. President, regular course.
We have to vote it? Is this suspension of those? We're gonna give us one sec.
Spend a minute. Only takes some votes for the election of city clerk.
Oh, okay. All right, okay. All right, all right, good. So you can make a recommendation.
Tonight?
Yep.
Oh, sure. So I recommend... So, I recommend.
And we're going to vote tonight.
I recommend the election of city clerk Lynn Bouchard, term to expire April 15, 2023, and she has to stay until then. No, oh, I redact that.
Thank you. So, counsel sir, the recommendation read for the election of the city clerk, Lynne Bouchard. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Frida.
Yea.
Counsel Dubrowski.
Yea.
Counsel Ashel Fozefra.
Yea.
Counsel Feckley.
Yea.
Counsel Bonanza.
Yea.
Counsel Odenger.
Yea.
Counsel Cormier.
Yea.
I should record a jay by a vote of eight to nothing. You're not going anywhere.
No, he's voted.
Should we call Danny? Is he jumping up and down, or is he? Okay, probably. I don't know, he's not. I'm only teasing you. We're going to miss you. We'll have to deal with that and a few other meetings down the road. We also now, we also have a first reading of the ordinance, formerly Legal Affairs Petition 31-18. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. First reading of an ordinance, amend Chapter 16, Section 16-34 of the revised ordinances entitled, "Classification of Positions." By deleting the classification of S9 for city clerk and inserting in its place the classification of S10, such amendment to be effective July 1, 2018. This is formerly Legal Affairs Petition 31-18. My recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance, and I would ask you to poll my committee.
I yield the floor to the clerk. Counsel Frida?
I agree.
Third member, Counsel Bonanza?
I concur.
Mr. Chairman?
Unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance.
With the hearing?
Oh, with the, yeah, that's right.
You have that? You have the date for, it's the 23rd of May?
April.
I'm sorry, April 23, 7:10 PM in the council chambers.
Okay, and we'd also request a hearing on the second reading of the ordinance, April 23, 2018, at 7:10 PM.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel sir, their recommendation read to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. Are there any questions on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Frida.
Yea.
Counsel Dubrowski.
Yea.
Counsel Ashel Fozefra.
Yea.
Counsel Feckley.
Yea.
Counsel Bonanza.
Yea.
Counsel Odenger.
Yea.
Counsel Cormier.
Yea.
I should record a jay. The first reading of the ordinance has been adopted with the hearings established for April 23, 7:10 PM in the council chambers. Thank you. Any other items on the new business? Counsel Feckley, you have the floor.
Yes, Mr. President, I just wanted to announce that we have scheduled a Ways and Means Committee meeting for April 17, 2018, at 5 o'clock to review the process for hiring a new city clerk. Discussion, review of applications for the position of the city clerk, and then the Ways and Means Committee will be entering into executive session for the purpose of reviewing the applications for the position of city clerk.
Thank you very much. I'll also yield the floor back to you for our special meeting on April 17.
Yes.
At 6 PM in the council chamber. If you'd like to explain what we'll be doing at that meeting?
Yes.
If you're ready?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
We will be, well, first we'll be having the public forum because it is a regular meeting, and we will have matters before the city council, will be interviews with the finalists for the position of Assistant City Clerk, and then new business, election of Assistant City Clerk, term to expire April 15, 2023.
Okay, and when are you going to review the ground rules, that evening?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So, I want to thank you and the members of Ways and Means for going through the arduous process to get us to this point.
Thank you.
A lot of excellent applications came in. A lot of really good people that want to work here in the city, so we're very grateful to them. You know, regardless if they are one of the three finalists or not, we deeply appreciate it. So, what we'll do is that, that meeting will take place, again, on the, it's an open meeting.
It is.
It will be taking place on the 17th. If there's any other council business that comes up, do you have any objection to me posting it on that agenda?
No.
Okay.
The only thing that I would request is that that business perhaps come first.
Absolutely.
And then the interviews would be afterwards.
We'll do that.
Yeah.
Sure, thank you. Okay, thank you.
And I have one, I have one more.
Sure, go ahead.
I have one more. On the, the agenda for today were reappointments, and I have an updated list for the appointments to boards and commissions, and there are quite a few commissioners and board members who, whose terms have already expired or will be expiring very, very soon. So, I was wondering if I could ask you, Mr. President, to ask the mayor to review the list that he could receive from the city clerk's office, it's the same list that I received, and see if there's anyone else on this list that he wishes to reappoint. There are several that kind of are surprising to me that they were not on the list today. For example, the DPW director's term expired on April 15, 2017, and just one other that I wanted to point out, the planning director, the chair of the planning director, planning board, I mean, his term expired on April 15, 2015. So, if the mayor could just look over this list and see if he wanted to update, request the council approve some additional reappointments.
Right.
I think that would be in order.
And you know the situation on why that is what it is?
I do, but I'd like to readdress it as the.
I agree.
This is the first time that I've done this many reappointments.
Yep.
As Ways and Means chair, so I would just like to be updated.
It was great to see, we did have two department heads come down. We had the recreation director and director of veteran services, so they are before, so that's good.
Yes.
So, that's a start.
It is.
Okay, good. So, I'll have a conversation with the mayor on that.
Thank you.
And see if maybe we can continue to send them down. Okay, thank you very much. Any other items on the new business? Okay, community calendar. Counsel Frida, can you share a little bit of information regarding your big event this Wednesday night?
Sure. Wednesday night is the Rotary Vocational Awards, 24th year that we do it. There are 10 recipients, one from, three from, three teachers, one from K through 5. That's, I'm not going to remember all of them. K through 5 is Kelly Bernard from Johnny Appleseed. Middle school is Caitlin Henry from San Jose, and the high school is Darryl Robichaud. Those three are being honored, have been selected by their peers. They'll be honored. The Mac Pomerini from the DPW is that recipient. Linda Rossi from the Treasurer's Department is that recipient for City Hall. The library is Nancy Turigny. Who am I missing? Police Department.
Police, fire.
Is Kelly Valley. Fire Department is Jeremy Murphy.
Do you do recreation department? Or is that, no, okay, all right.
Department of the City Hall.
Right, oh, yeah, that's right, okay.
I think that's it, was that 10?
Pretty good. Pretty close. You counting?
Yeah.
Wow.
Police, fire, DPW.
Excellent.
One, two, three. St. Anna's and.
Yeah, oh, yeah.